First order of business is to appoint alternates. We've got Melissa. Who's Jay Rudding? I don't see Diane. There she is.
She is.
So Diane is here, so we don't need to appoint any alternates. Thank you, Diane. Evening. First order of business is to approve the minutes of the December 6th regular meeting. I have one comment that during where it talks about last consideration of the opt-out consideration, the plan, the copy of the planning or the call to order that was published repeated the opt-out for one year language that had been removed otherwise. So it's really just in the minutes in that. I don't have a line number, but it's on the second page, almost at the bottom, where it says application 2124. So that one year should be struck. Any other corrections or comments?
If I, I just came across one sort of, it's, it's obviously a typo, but my document I printed, it doesn't have line numbers on it. So let me describe it as almost in the middle of the whole thing. But it's the section that has to do with the hotel conversion to apartments. There's a line that says in the middle of that, Mr. Bovey stated the imperious coverage would be increased from forty-five to forty-eight percent. Imperious is missing the letter V. It should be impervious.
Right. Good catch.
I kind of like imperious better, but.
It's an interesting word, but it doesn't belong there.
I was pretty impressed with the with the lack of any typos and so on. I'm amazed you caught that one. Any others? You have a motion to approve the minutes as modified?
I'll make a motion.
Who moved?
Diane.
Diane. Second?
I'll second it.
Second. Diane. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? It passed six, nothing. Thank you. Okay. The next item is a continuation of the public hearing. And the text amendment to opt out of Public Act 2129. And as I, I mentioned to say at the beginning of this meeting, everybody knows that this is Mike's last meeting. He's going to replace Bill Volker in, in Cheshire. So he's replacing a really good guy. Well, Bill was a great guy here.
Is he interested in coming back?
He's retiring. He's, you know, he had, I don't know what the diseases, but it, it cripples his legs. And he's in a wheelchair and he's retiring. So it's really sad, sad case. I'm sorry to have that happen, but it's a good opportunity for Mike, and I think he's done a great job for us and we appreciate it.
Here.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. Good luck.
Now, back to public hearing. That'll get in our text of our public hearing address. Did we get any more comments, Mike?
No.
And Laura? Okay. Does anybody in the commission have things to add to the to the record for that?
Just, Mr. Chairman, just, just quick, I, I know what you had a question about, you know, whether communities have opted out or are in the process of opting out right now?
Yes.
You, you're not alone. Oxford, Wilton, Cheshire, Rocky Hill, Enfield, Southington, Westport, Darien, the borough of Fenwick are just, just a few communities that have already, either they're in the process of their public hearings or in like communities such as Cheshire, they actually closed their public hearing and if the council at this point, they are opting out. All these communities have expressed, expressed interest of opting out. And like I said, they're, they're all in different stages, but they're all basically running a parallel path with us right now.
Okay. And do we have a, a list of those that we could attach to our our, our resolution if we wish?
We, we could modify that to include that, conclude those communities.
What do you think, guys? Sounds like a good idea.
I, I just think it's a good idea. Yeah.
Well, I think it would be helpful if we knew the list was an up-to-date. I mean, I don't know, but if the, we got six towns and there's really sixteen, I mean, there's a hundred and sixty-nine towns in Connecticut. I would expect more than two or three or four have made decisions, but I don't know.
Well, remember we've got a, there's a year in which communities have to actually do the opting out. So some may not see an urgency to it and may want to wait till the end. So I wouldn't think that the fact that there's only X amount so far, you know, we've got an entire year still to January twenty twenty-three, I think it is, right? So more than a year.
Mike just listed eight or ten in the process, I think.
Right. Right.
I think it would be helpful to see their, their logic for opting out as well.
Mike, didn't you attend the meeting?
So, so I can say the town of Cheshire has a very similar resolution that, that you're passing with a lot of the comments were the same flavor. They would like to control their own destiny. They're looking to update their accessory dwelling unit regulations similar to Simsbury. And rather than accepting, you know, statute, they're, they're going to determine what they like and what they don't. That's the same flavor based on, you know, comments I read from Rocky Hill, Southington, Enfield, Westport, Darien. I mean, it's, it's, it's usually the, the, the common theme is the commission would like to develop their regulations as they seem fit. That's why they're opting out. Not saying no to, to the public act, but more importantly, like I said, is kind of, you know, controlling your own destiny.
Wish there were a way to really convey to the public that by opting out, we're not opting out of the values that, that prompted the public act. We just differ with how it should be applied and, and how Simsbury should approach it. You know, something as simple as it's not correct in every single zone. Those are things that we can't do if we don't opt out.
Yeah, I think we've, we've said that before. I think I think the resolution that Mike gave her, you know, Laura, I guess it is, gave us says that, but we can look at that. Does anybody see any language there that should be changed? Or we can, we can keep the public hearing open for another, another meeting.
Are you talking about the comparisons you did back in September or was there actually a resolution?
No, there's a, there's a memo that was in the Dropbox.
I did not see that. I think it was added later.
I didn't see it either.
Cause I saw, I didn't see it this morning, but I saw it this afternoon. Ah, well, let me go there.
It's dated twelve thirteen.
Actually, actually, maybe Laura, do you, do you mind? I don't mean to put you on the spot. Maybe you can go over, read the, the resolution to the commission while we have the public hearing open.
If you're able to put it up on screen.
Oh, the memo to see, the memo that, that today?
Correct. It was uploaded today accidentally. I can share the screen as well if you want. Oh, Mike, you beat me to it.
Sorry. Could everyone, let me then a little more? Could you see it?
Yeah.
A little larger would be helpful.
I will zoom in right now, Bruce. Hold on. Is that better for us?
Okay, I'll just squint a little.
One, one more would help, Mike. There we go.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay.
Laura, why don't you read it to us?
Absolutely. This is a resolution to opt out of Connecticut general statutes eight dash two as authorized under Public Act twenty-one twenty-nine. The Simsbury zoning commission, having previously initiated the opt-out process by positive referral from the planning commission on November ninth, twenty twenty-one, and conducting a public hearing on November fifteenth, reconvening on December sixth and December twentieth, and in accordance with Connecticut general statute eight dash seven, has considered provision for an act on accessory dwelling units as set forth within Connecticut general statutes eight, eight dash two, as revised under Public Act twenty-one twenty-nine, and hereby formally elect to opt out of these provisions as authorized by said public act. The reason for the commission's decision is that we'll be reviewing the current regulations for accessory dwelling units regulated under section. Oh, that should actually include the section number. I'm sorry. Mike, you know that section offhand? Is it?
I think those of us should have our, we should have our screens muted because we're getting backfeet from somewhere.
I believe it's section three dash five.
Mine says three dash five dash two or dot two, three dot five dot two.
Three, this, three, five, two.
Okay, A through B.
Okay.
I'm sorry, for some reason mine didn't. In order to make changes in which it seems necessary or appropriate, considering factors such as appropriate scaling with the possibility of unit size being based on zoning districts, regulate the permitting process rather than as of right approval, and retain the ability to modify the regulations on an as-needed or as-appropriate basis. The commission also requests that the board of selectmen ratified by two-third majority, the decision of this commission opting out of which the provisions of the amended Connecticut general statute section eight dash two as provided for within Public Act twenty-one dash twenty-nine.
Thank you, Laura.
You're welcome.
Okay, com- comments on that? Were any subject related? Bruce, you're muted.
Thank you. Let me just raise this out of connectivity last time, and I didn't get to this, but we have yet to speak to issues related to our Simsbury center code and the Hartford life property code. That when ending our code or reviewing our code, we're not just talking about the thing that we referred to as Simsbury zoning regulations. They're all zoning regulations and they're all subject to the public act. So I don't know if that that needs to be referenced in the letter or the communication now to the, to the Board of Selectmen, but our, our responsibility is to look at all of our regulations and not, and I, and I know that at least parking is covered in all of those. So there are issues across the board that we need to look at. And if we're trying to communicate the fullness of our intention to the Board of Selectmen and to the public, I think it might be of value to make clear that.
You're frozen again.
We're up to make a decision. Do we need to reference these others so that we give a full picture to the Board of Selectmen? They'll get a sense of the scope of what needs to be reviewed and considered further. It doesn't fit all from the state regulators.
So something like including without limitation, the impact on the existing, you know, form-based code and suret and blah, 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 that stuff?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, but I don't want to make it bigger than it needs to be, but we need this framed in everybody's mind because, I mean, I'm jumping ahead here, but I think we need to get an attorney. And everybody's going to say we can't spend money and we do this, we can't do that, but we, we can wait six or eight months and see how far we've gotten and how, how much confidence we have and then hire an attorney and then we'll be in a rush. But that's just my thought.
We did have, we did have Bobby look at this, did we not? Mike?
Yeah. Yeah. So, so well, actually to Bruce's comment, you know, as you're developing regulations down the road, if you wanted Bob D or an attorney present as you're doing your regulations to, to address all this, you have the rights and we have Bob D, you know, obviously he's on retainer with the town. And, and, you know, I would say that this is, this is a subject matter that is time-sensitive. You got one year to, to, to fix, to, to do any changes. Cause you're, any regulations that, that once you opt out for accessory dwelling units need to be effective January first, twenty twenty-three.
I don't know whether anybody saw the New York Times article this weekend on ADUs. It was specifically in New Jersey. But to that point, having an attorney, they, the town got taken to court because they had an owner occupancy requirement. And the court decided that as a zoning commission, you were not allowed to say who occupied the, the parcel, but only what kind of parcel and what was allowed. Mike, I'm saying it right? So anyhow, that, that starts me thinking about our owner occupancy or anything else, like you said, that might need to be reviewed before we write it into. Is that under Jersey law or was that federal law, Jersey or federal law? It was in New Jersey. They evidently have some very liberal ADU. They actually sold the ADU, which was eighteen hundred square feet as a separate parcel, even though it was on the same lot as the main house. So.
So, so Donna, Donna picks up on one of the points. It's highlighted in Laura's memo that we have a flag on that's saying we need input from Bob DiCrescenzo. Should, should the commission opt out and you want to develop your own regulations? If the owner occupied provision is to remain in your regulations, you need a legal opinion from Bob D to say, yes, you can do this. I, I believe, and assuming that it's, you know, I'll, I'll preface this, I'm not an attorney, but there was cases, and I think it's out of, it's out of New York. It's a federal case. Belter, I think, is, is one of the communities that's over near Port Jeff that, that actually the federal second court of appeals said that communities can regulate, put a restriction on rentals for owner occupied in, in an ADU setting.
So that's, if that's a second circuit case, that's applicable to us.
That's law. That's law. That's applicable to us, the federal law. However, you know, it, with just the changing of some of these federal cases, I would prefer that Bob D is saying that and not Mike Litten. Or I'm just saying that.
The case out of New Jersey may be based on the New Jersey constitution or New Jersey state law, which.
May not be relevant to Connecticut, however.
Right.
Yeah. But, but any federal cases, you, you want to make sure with, with Bob DiCrescenzo that, yeah, you can do this.
But our regulation exists the way it is right now. And, and opting out, we don't have to clean that stuff up to do the opt-out. As long as I think Bob D looks at our opt-out resolution and agrees with it. So I think we should ask Bob D before we, before we vote on the on the resolution. What do you guys think? I see Diane nodding, Kevin's nodding, Bruce is nodding.
Yeah.
Anna's nodding.
I think they make valid points. I think so. I don't have a vote on it, but I agree. And I think we should also ask Bob if we should expand the language, include something along the lines of what Bruce was suggesting, you know, including the impact on form-based code, you know, blah, blah.
All three of our codes.
Right. Well, I don't think our single family, how, um, single family zones within those form-based codes. Am I right, Mike?
No, the Hartford form-based code, you have a, a cluster, uh, what is it? Neighborhood cluster zone, I think is what it's called, where, where you can cluster basically, um, small groups.
Yeah, there were townhouses along the south side of, uh, yeah, Delka Ridge. So yes, so we do have to make sure that we include those in our reference. So what I think we should do is ask Laura since Mike is bowing out to take this to Bob D and ask those two questions. First of all, the general, is this language okay? And secondly, what do we have to add to cover the form-based codes in our town?
Okay.
And, and that basis, I think we should keep the public hearing open for another, another meeting. Everybody agree with that?
I agree with that.
I agree.
I agree. Okay. Does Bob need a target date? We need a reply by, I think it would be a good idea because he has a way of things. Is a funny, you know, we don't always fit in the priority.
Well, we, we have to, Bruce, because.
His office, that's the way we, pardon me.
Bruce, our, our public hearing has to be closed.
Yeah.
So Laura, you could convey to him that we'd like to do it before we have to close the public hearing or extend it.
Yeah.
Have to tell him that.
Absolutely. Not a problem.
Okay.
Mike or Laura, have, as the other towns that you talked about, have any of them made their final resolution? Have they voted on it yet or are they still pending like us?
I believe Cheshire voted on their final resolution.
Yeah, we.
They must have a good town, town planner.
Yeah. Yeah, we paid homage to Mr. Volker and fault, fault suit. But yeah, I was trying to go through the other towns' websites to try to find any documents to just make sure, to see if there was any other ones that did something similar.
I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, if there's more speaking points that we need for the selectmen. I mean, we understand it, but I'm not sure that this, you know, the selectmen will, you know, appreciate all of the intricacies here. And the public is, keeps thinking, you know, calling this the opt-out and we're not opting out. So I think, you know, this says it legally is, but I think we need kind of.
Well, I believe that our new Board of Selectmen liaison is planning on attending our next meeting. She is an attorney and she's planning on attending our next meeting. So, you know, we can have a conversation with her about that. She can inform them.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll keep that open until the next meeting and we'll try to get found to get it things back to us by that time. Okay, the next application is the short-term rentals application, but that we don't open that public hearing until January third. So that's just.
Should we make a motion just to continue that public hearing? Do we need to do that?
You don't have to make a motion, but we will.
We got two shaking heads on staff, so I will make a motion that we continue the public hearing to the next regularly scheduled meeting in January.
Thank you. You hear a second?
I'll second.
Bruce, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, six, nothing. No extensions. We'll carry that over to the next meeting. Okay, old business. We have the opt-out, which is still open, so we're not going to take any action on that. The next is, the next two actually are to be tabled too, because zoning, DRB has not acted on them. We have a motion to table the twenty-one, twenty-seven and twenty-one, twenty-eight.
I'll move that way. Table application twenty-one, twenty-seven and twenty-one, twenty-eight pending design review recommendation.
You hear a second?
Second.
Second by Diane. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Carry six, nothing. No extensions. Thank you. Okay, general commission business. Short-term rental regulation. Mike, we've got a a draft. Didn't you give us a draft?
Yeah. So, so I mean, that's what's set to public hearing. Bob D's good with it. So that's, that's moving forward. So I, I mean, I don't. We, we don't really have anything to discuss other than maybe just, uh, it was forwarded to the planning commission and they found it, they found it consistent with the goals and objectives of the planet conservation development. So you have more to come. You'll, you'll discuss that at your next meeting.
The question last time was, did Bob D agree with the language? And that, that was important to get cleared up.
Yes.
Okay.
The language, the language being the absence of the reference to the insurance, the million-dollar insurance liability, liability insurance that was supposed to have been included in that thing that, you know, a space holder was put into the thing that Board of Selectmen voted on. But it doesn't have Bob D's recommendation, which was, well, Mike was familiar with that too.
Yeah. So, but that's, that's the ordinance. So I mean, I don't.
It's not us.
Yeah, we should not get in the, the business with the requiring the insurance that really should be with the ordinance. Which, which, um, we can, Laura can discuss with Bob that it looks like that was omitted from the last version.
Okay.
Omitted from whose version?
The, the ordinance, I understand.
Okay. Now, I, I brought it up because you know, there was a selective identification of characteristics of a ADU, you know, and short-term rental in our definition, and the thing that you made up, and I was thinking, you know, if we're going to put some characteristics of it into our regulation, why not a few more so that anybody who comes across our you know, our, will get tuned in a little bit before they go down to the town hall to see about the permit, but I'm, I'm not you know, stressed out over it, but you know, it just seems to be, it was going to be discussed at this meeting. Now it's not going to be discussed at all. We're not going to deal with it, but hey, I brought it up and.
But I don't think that's in our bailiwick. I think when you go to get the permit, you have to come with an insurance certificate. And that's what should be.
I know, but I think that it would be beneficial frankly to have reiterated, there's the space, it could be over six hundred and something square feet, you know, get them twice on that, once in ours and once in that one, but.
Yeah, it's, it's not a good idea to have redundant, redundant things covering the same stuff because one gets.
We're already in there. The, the document, the, the language that staff drafted to define the STR covers stuff that's in the ordinance.
I don't think it defines.
Don't know the use, Bruce, the, the reason why that definition has to go in the regs is because you have permissive regulations. And if otherwise, the use would be considered prohibited. So I, that's, and I, I wanted it, we kept it consistent with the ordinance. So there was no conflict between the two documents. So that exact, that regularly, the definition was lifted and put right into the proposal for the, the zoning regulations. And the other thing would just be is that I, I wouldn't recommend putting too many regulation or, or standards in there for regulatory purposes, because as, as the chair pointed out, so you don't have a conflict between the two documents. Cause what, what, what you want to have is a perfect world where if someone misbehaves or fails to provide anything that's outlined in the ordinance, we can, that's, that's strictly by ordinance. It's easy to take away and deny the permit versus.
Yeah, I got that. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah. And, and the wording does say operation of a short-term rental requires a permit via town ordinance. So we do refer them in the code?
Yeah.
Yes. We do. Okay, anything more on that subject? We will have a public hearing next time. All right. Third thing is a little interesting twist. Did everybody read about this gift basket, basket situation?
What about the sign regulation first, before you get too excited?
I'm sorry, the sign, the sign regulation. Mike edited the sign regulation to have backlit sign or internally lit signs on basically on B three near Albany Turnpike.
So, so with that distance, that distance will just basically be stop and shop is the line. Nothing north of stop and shop that zone B three will qualify for that internally lit provision.
Right. But there was more in those regulations that we need to go back over as a, as a commission before we propose them as the proposed regs. There's digital signs in there. There's, there's other things that may not be, some of us may not be in favor of. So I think we, we need to go over the language of that regulation before we put it into the public hearing.
So did we already commit to a public hearing?
In February.
Date on this?
Yeah.
February.
At the last meeting.
Yes.
So it's scheduled for February fifth. So it's scheduled for February 5th. Better get busy. I, I, I read about half. But no, I'm sorry, didn't read it sooner, but it's kind of heavy duty. I mean, it's, there's a lot there. If we're going to review it and discuss it, we better get going.
Okay, we can do that in January. We can have a special meeting in January. Or we can defer, we can defer the public hearing. Which would you prefer?
I think we might be jammed up trying to get to the February 5th date, but.
Do we only have one meeting because of Martin Luther King?
That's correct.
Correct. And we only have one meeting in February too.
Oh, wow.
Okay. So let's, let's suspend the public hearing. We haven't noticed the public hearing. And so let's suspend the public hearing. We voted to have a public hearing. So let's make a motion to. Stay that public hearing. Notice until we have reviewed the. The sign regs in detail. So can I have a motion to rescind the public hearing date?
You need a motion or a second, Dave?
We need a motion.
I'll move that we. Rescind the fifth that was previously set for a public hearing on the revised lighting signage regulations.
Okay. Somebody's second, second, Kevin?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, and nobody abstained. Okay, six, nothing it carries. We will discuss, we will have the sign regulations on our agenda next time and we'll start the discussion. In detail. I think, I thought we had gone through it once.
I, I don't remember. Mike, was that thing, was that? Boiler place from somewhere? Did you come up with that? So, so Bob, Bob D actually came up with that. That was through one of his associations. It was kind of a reaction to all those court cases. And, and, and remember the conversation really just boiled down to, at least how we left it the last time was internal it signs. What, what to do with these? And we, that's why we sent it out for input.
Wow. Okay, but we can.
Get into it in more detail, but.
Never, never hurts to go over it again. And we certainly have time. Okay, so onto the gift basket liquor business. Are you, everybody is aware of what's happened here. The, the woman that has the liquor store. In Corrin's Old Flower Shop. Wants to do wine gift, gift baskets. And the liquor regulations won't allow her to do that out of her shop. So she wants to do it as a home-based business and has gone to get a permit for such a business. Out of her home from the liquor authorities. And. She's asked us whether or not. It's a strictly home-based business that we can have her do as of right. Or does she need to get a special exception for liquor sales? And so we're being asked to decide that here tonight.
Is there a different liquor license for, for, for this, for? Can you describe that Laura, what the difference is? And can one have both licenses?
They can. She actually already holds a liquor license in the town for her, her store herself. This is for home and it's only a gift basket. Retailer. So it is only for gift basket liquor. That is the only kind of liquor that she'd be able to sell out of her home.
And a web-based, there's no.
It's web-based business. It's totally limited. It's not, it's just because she's unable to do it out of her business. Because of the food element. She wants to include like wines and chocolates. And because there's this food element to it, she's unable to do it from the commercial property.
So the issue isn't the home-based business, it's the liquor aspect of the home-based business.
Correct. And whether or not currently we only allow liquor permits by special exception if it's a new location. She already has a liquor permit, but it's at her store. This would be out of her home. So it's whether or not you want to consider this a home-based. Or by special exception based off of your current zoning regulations. This is the first one I've come across. I've never actually seen this application before.
But what, what, what consideration should we give to the fact that she's already got a liquor license? It's for a region in the center of Simsbury. How does that? How, how should that affect their thinking? It doesn't seem to me it carries any weight. Does it with the liquor commission?
It's a separate application.
It doesn't, Bruce, it's.
Yeah, so we should give it no weight, the fact that she's.
No, it's just part of the story.
Yeah.
I have a question.
But then it says their second location already. Yeah.
Your second. Melissa?
Oh, so the question I have is, right now she's applying for, if, if we approve her as of right for a home base, to do this home-based business. She's telling us right now that this is solely web-based. But if we approve her, is that approval, if we do it as of right? And we're permitting the liquor. There's no exception, there's no condition to it not being home-based once the, not being just web-based. If it's as of right, is, is that correct?
So the other option that you have is a home-based service business, which is actually a little bit more regulated. I don't know if anyone saw the memo that I prepared about this. And that actually requires a permit for a period of years. So you can actually revisit it. Otherwise it would be entirely as of right if you went just for the original home-based business permit. And then she could switch it from web-based to what, just all the other. Regulations that apply to a home-based business. So she could decide in the future to sell these out of her home. As long as the parking and the visitors and that sort of stuff that's in our regulations. Is adhered to, correct?
If we treat it as a service. As home-based service.
Or even if we just do regular as of right, if we do this as a special exception, can we? Keep the. Public retail sales out of it and make it, can we make it just web-based?
Is it a special?
Why not? We give her a, a special exception that goes with the property. And insists that sales are all web-based. Online only.
So that answers my question about whether I would support this as a right or, or special exception then.
I, I think we could, I think we could make that constraint.
Yeah.
So, if it's a web-based business, does that mean she's shipping?
Yes.
So I wasn't aware that you were allowed to ship alcohol as a.
Yes.
Standard procedure.
Oh, yeah.
And now.
You can?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's not straightforward though.
Let me ask this. Laura, I'm sure that in your memo, the items listed A through J, are those exact? Extractions from the Simsbury zoning regulations? Okay. Then let me just raise this point. I'm looking at item H and it says manufacturing, warehousing and inventory storage are prohibited. I'm trying to picture how this business could operate without inventory storage. You make them one at a time and you drive them down to the post office or UPS comes? I mean, how does that work? It's already in the regulation, inventory storage, and she knows it if she's seen the regular. Relation. Cause that doesn't, it's not, it doesn't distinguish between inventory storage of materials. For, you know, weaving baskets. It just says inventory. So it's whether supplies or finished product, it's inventory. Is prohibited. I think it was intentional because inventory would take up a certain amount of space. There's a space limitation on these businesses.
So I would also ask you look at the number I. Cause. It's an arts and crafts activity. I don't know. You could argue it a little bit, goods for sale on or off the properties. All businesses have to have some form of inventory.
Yeah, you can.
Who wrote that in our regulation?
We did.
We did.
I don't remember being part of it, but I would have asked the same question then. What's the inventory storage? But anyway, that being said.
I think we were talking about a larger inventory then, because we've had the two bakery people come through and yeah, you gotta have flour and whatever. I wouldn't consider that inventory storage.
There's that.
We have to have an inventory of materials.
You could call it supplies. They've got a bank of supplies. Okay, it's not inventory, it's supplies. But I, I don't know. My opinion is that, is that she needs to get a special exception. So that we can constrain it in the method of sales.
And why is it she doesn't, she didn't want, I don't know, you talked to her Laura, right? She has two other retail locations. I mean, she has the one in Simsbury. She has another one. Is it in Granby or?
Granby. You can't do gift baskets out of the stores because of the food there.
But she could conceivably store excess materials. In the stores and then bring home as needed to produce the said baskets.
I'm sure that's where she's getting her wine.
That would be my guess.
What about, um, like Rosedale's? Do they have that same? Permit so they can ship?
No, they're an agribusiness.
I know, but they do, they do the same thing, right? You could, I assume order, mail order from them, right?
Well, I know the month clubs, those, right?
Yeah, well, I'm just thinking here we got two on E-Talk Street.
I, I don't know that, that they can do mail order business, but they, they could if they did the right.
They, they would have to get this license, is it?
I think it's a state thing.
No, it's a state, yeah, yeah. This license is just very specific to the gift baskets. If they're selling the products such as wine. You know, it could be Frankett's Distillery, Pottermun Spirits. He could potentially, i- if he applied for the proper approvals with the state. Sell, you know, I have an online store and say you can buy a bottle of whiskey and I'll mail it to you. Cause that is allowed under state, state law now. Cause there are other, other, you know, like we said earlier, the, the wine of the month club now delivers.
Right.
And that's a liquor control strict on his, on his liquor permit.
And is there a, is there a restriction on the number of liquor stores in town, like similar to what we had with the cannabis situation?
So yeah, you, you have one, one license for every 2,500 people. And so Simsbury, I believe there's only one retail license available at this time. But this particular license that, that Lisa's applying for is, is entirely different. It's treated as an independent use. I, I've actually had a, in my career, when I was in Waterford, we had a florist who was, who, who applied for this license. And the florist was doing like a wine with, you know, either like an edible arrangement sort of setup or with flowers, et cetera. And he was, he was doing it out of the florist shop. So I've seen these things before and they're very. That one was, you went online, you picked what basket you wanted, you ordered it. And because it was a commercial establishment, then you would show up and Michael Hulk had your basket waiting for you, but he had a liquor license to do that. But he partnered with, I can't remember which winery down in the southeastern part of the state to do that.
So a florist can sell wine, but a wine can't sell food?
Right.
That's the liquor control at its finest.
Takes a lot of sense.
So. Do you guys? What's your opinion of what we should do?
Well, I would recommend going to special exception route.
I would too.
Same.
I would, I would do the special exception.
Does a special exception lead to the five-year permit?
No.
It will run with the land.
No, it, it constrains.
It's a point of a five-year permit if you're, you know, they've got it with the land.
Different permits. You're talking about the home-based service permit versus a special exception permit?
What about the home-based?
Service.
Can we do both? Can we do both? Is it over now?
No, why would we want to do that?
Well, that home-based servicing is reviewable every five years, whereas the special.
Right.
It's not.
Once the special exception is granted, it will run with the land. The home-based service permit actually does expire once that homeowner leaves the property, just as another topic.
Can we constrain it to just web-based with the home-based, with the service thing you're talking about?
I believe you could have it as a condition of now.
I don't think we can do that.
If you go to the home service, you allow visitors to come to the home. The home-based business is, it was the use, there's no visitors. So I, I think if, it sounds like, you know, I would say if, if, if I was a voting member. The special exception gives you the, the highest degree of, of control over the situation. Cause if she then wants to say, I want people to come to the house, well, then she has to come back to you and modify her special exception.
Do we have the capacity? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, who was speaking?
It was Melissa. Do we have the capacity to create something in regulations that? Doesn't have things like this run with the land? Can we create our own little category of things?
No, that's what the service. That's what the, the service business, home-based service business with a five-year permit was intended to do. We don't have the ability to modify that to constrain them to just web-based.
Could we do that? Can we change that regulation?
You'd have to change our regulation.
Okay, but it's doable, just future thinking.
I think that, that there is a, a thought and the service in, using the service business approach. And saying five years. If she decided to sell from the house. And let people pick up there. And it became a nuisance, we would not renew the permit. But if it were not a nuisance, then what do we care? If it's not, if it's not, if it's service-based business, it's not causing lots of traffic and undue noise and those kinds of things. Then why do we care whether she's going web-based or not? Or she's doing both. And it requires less cost on her part. She doesn't have to. File an application for $240 and they have a $60 fee to add it to the land use records. And it expires when she leaves. So somehow rather. Your point Melissa, and why not do that is, is more interesting to me all of a sudden.
And so it's, it's mail our business, but could she meet someone elsewhere? And, and, and deliver the basket in person? So they could meet in the parking lot of Simsbury Town Shops and deliver the basket?
As long as the, as long as the, the people from consumer protection weren't there.
Yeah, that, that's what I was going to say, just as long as there's nothing in the, the regs with consumer protection that would conflict that. Yeah, she could in theory, you make the baskets at her house and tell you, go pick it up at Wines, et cetera, in Simsbury or Granby.
Yeah, I was just wondering if that's a possibility.
Her current retail model that she gave us via email was online only, but it might be a possibility for her at some point in time.
Yeah, but if you were doing a local, you know, corporation, you were buying gifts or something, I mean, it gotta cost a lot of money to ship a bottle of wine. Versus coming down, you know, if you were living in town to go pick it up would make some sense to me.
And there's also the fact that. There are hours for liquor sales. What if you called on Sunday night at midnight and said, I gotta have a bottle of wine?
Can I pick it up in the parking lot?
Can I pick it up? Can I pick it up at your house?
Can't think of that one.
Well, I did, because that's kind of how bootleggers work now. You just, they buy it and then.
I guess I'd like to look at the service regulations a little more carefully.
So I did include a memo that actually has all three different types of, of permits that it could be included in the packet.
Yeah.
Yeah, let me see if I can go find those.
Laura, if we permit her as a home-based service. Laura, if we permit her as a home based service. And her description says it's a web only business. If she doesn't adhere to that, then she's violating the the permit that we gave her. For a service business. And we could. Tell her that she's she can't do that. She can't sell from the property.
Laura, can you tell me where in the drop box that is? I'm not seeing it under the. Yeah, that's all I see in there is a memo.
It's a two page memo.
Got it. I see it. It's in the middle there. I skimmed over that.
So with a home based service. Business is authorized by the zoning enforcement officer, but is who determines? Whether it's a. It says the commission saw consider the following factor. So we decide it and then. The CEO. Issues the permit. Is that all that's saying?
Yes.
All right, because the criteria is pretty much the same.
It's very similar.
The the big difference is, once you get into the home service based business, you have customers or visitors coming. Your home business, there's no foot traffic.
As I'm looking at the regulations that Laura spelled out, there can't be any increase, no effect on neighborhood traffic. They can't park on the street. There has to be sufficient off street parking. No exterior evidence of business. It can't negatively affect the character. Low it low enough intense intensity customary incidental accessory uses to the property as a residence. So really, if she wanted to do, you know, the occasional person picking up a basket. That wouldn't have a substantial impact, but. Anything other than the occasional business. Or occasional basket pickup here or there. Would violate those provisions and she'd be violating her permit then, right?
Correct.
I'm comfortable with that.
I was thinking that's what the. Special exception is, but I didn't realize the home base was different.
Fires in five years.
Yeah, we like the licensing. That's the same idea as the short term rentals. Licensing is a good thing.
So you're in favor of the service business approach? Kevin?
Yeah.
Well, does that? I'm I'm looking at that third section though, that says alcohol uses or the sale of alcoholic beverages. She's gonna be. Selling alcohol. So everything that follows has to apply, right? It has to be a special exception. That's what the regulation says. I don't know who wrote. That either. So there's no discussion about that. If she's gonna put alcohol in those baskets. Has to be a special exception deal.
I think you're right.
It's like if she was gonna liquor store. On Meadow Street.
No, I I think you're right, Bruce. I I've forgotten that I had gone through that.
Regulation state define.
And this is a case where it's a a woman who's got two stores and is. Is not. You know, somebody who's just doing it part time. So I think she could. Uh, be required to go to a special exception without undue hardness hardship.
Laura, where in our regulations do we have that provision that you put in about alcoholic uses?
I believe it's under the section on special exceptions.
Okay, because none of the other ones actually specifically say you can't have alcohol.
There is a section on alcohol in our regulations.
Oh, okay, so it's its own.
It's on page twenty eight of the regulations. Which is actually the section on permitted and special permit uses. But it's mostly for. Yeah, it's four point five permitted and special permit uses. It's under business standards, though.
So then it sounds like we don't have a choice but to do a special exception because otherwise alcohol is prohibited.
Correct. I think.
So then back to what Bruce said.
But is it not both? Is it not both?
Both.
A home based. And a liquor permit.
I don't think you can limit it like that just because the special exception, if you allow the sale of liquor there, wouldn't it run with the land unless I'm? Interpreting this wrong. So I don't think you could say it's a five year permit that expires when it already has to run with the land with the special exception.
No, but we can constrain the activity.
You could add conditions of the approval with the special exception, but I don't believe you can have an expiration date on it.
Oh, no, no, you can't.
Okay, so the special exception doesn't require to come back every five years. We can say. We we give her the special exception and there's no real undue hardship on her part because we're basically just making the exception for her. And that runs with the land, so forever and ever and always, basically. Sorry, Laura, I don't see it quite this way. Um, I'm looking at. Section four point five permitted and special permit uses, correct?
Correct, or four point six, actually, is the alcohol uses.
So it's page twenty eight?
Yep. Or are you looking at the chart?
No, I was I was looking at the chart. And that's under. So the part with the chart is about restaurants. With without liquor taverns, but then. Permitted uses which so.
She has to come with us to us with the license class that she is getting from the state.
No use.
That is to be part of her application.
So I'm not sure that this applies to. There's something in section four point six B sub three. It talks about no use selling or dispensing alcoholic liquor create located in a residential zone. Shall be moved to a new location in a residential zone. And I don't see anything in here that permits alcohol. Selling or dispensing in a residential zone. All this stuff, even for a special exception, is only in a business. Zone so that I've seen. And I'm sorry, I'm waiting it right now, but.
So so actually.
Business districts.
Melissa, that applies for. That that's that's specific to retail existing retail establishments when they're relocating. If you have an existing nonconforming one, you know, it's it's preventing it from popping up in all. Commercial uh, commercial zoning districts.
But this is all about business districts. The special exception, the four point six and four point five are all about that. Where is it in residential? Because we're looking at a residential zone, right?
Yes. But.
Okay, wait a minute. Let's let's back up. Let's not make a federal case out of this and find things that are. Are are not sensible. I think if we ask her to do a special exception, it goes with the land. And we can constrain it to web based sales. If we did a service business. I don't believe that. That she could sell alcohol in that service business.
I don't see anything. In. I don't see anything in the residential stuff that addresses alcohol at all.
Laura, you don't happen to have the what the state permit says for that that class. It may have some restrictions already built into it, right?
Let me see if I can find it on their website.
Because obviously they thought about this when they developed the regs, that somebody was going to be selling it. Gift baskets.
As as I take a look at this. I don't think we need a special exception in a residential zone. But I think that the service. Home based service business by permit. Is appropriate. And we can set permit conditions such as limiting numbers of days and our hours of operation or number of customers per week. If you look at section.
I'm pretty sure that our regulations say that you can't sell or serve alcohol without a special exception. That's independent of what zone it is. It's not constrained to business only, I don't believe.
Because because, yeah, you you're Dave's right, because you have, obviously, Rosedale Farms has a liquor license there in a residentially zoned district. Um, the farms, uh, Simsbury Farms complex, there's a liquor license for the restaurant there, residentially zoned. It's it's the liquor license that triggers the special exception. And so the I guess I guess earlier the dilemma is. Will her license trigger a uh, an approval of the special exception, or do we treat it as? Home a home business and we follow the the home business uh, regs.
But I don't think we have a choice. We can't do home business because it specifically says no alcohol.
I don't see anything that says no alcohol. Where does it say that?
In our home based business, I believe I.
Nope. Nope.
It says no illegal activities.
But you have to have a special exception in any zone, business or residential.
Where does it say that?
It's a general. Rule in our regulations. It isn't constrained by zone.
Where? But where?
Yeah, we have the um, the business, the alcohol under business. Section.
But it's not under residential. That special exception only applies in a business district.
And we've got a flaw in our system.
Maybe our applicant is delighted that there's a loophole for her.
Page two of the memo in front of you. Has a bullet. I mean, it it's it's actually the sentence right in the middle of that first section and only section. Alcoholic use or the sale of alcoholic beverages may be permitted by special exception. Considered on an individual basis. It doesn't say what the zone is. It just says.
But all all due respect there, the memo is not specific. The memo is lifting.
It's it's our stat. It's our regulation, Melissa, right, Laura?
No, but it's lifted out of section four. It's it's lifted out of section four under business districts. It's not lifted out of and it is not found in section three, which is residential. That is, it's a completely accurate statement.
Oh, okay.
As applies to business districts, but not as applied to residential districts.
Yeah, unless your home is in a. In a business. It it's not related. It doesn't relate to a home based business.
We maintain a lot more control over this. If we go with the home based. Service. Business by permit. We can regulate times, we can.
We can do that with a special exception as well, and. We have always treated alcohol. Sales. And consumption as a special exception requirement or requiring a special exception. And.
I'm just saying what the reg said.
If our if our reg is, if our reg is at as with what we have been doing. Uh, we need to correct our our regulation, but we're making. We're we're looking at something that's uh, not in accordance with what our standard practice is if we don't do this by special exception.
So I would, I mean, I'm not even seated tonight, but I would just query. Why would we want to do something that gives an as of right that'll run with the land after that? When we could, according to our regulations, maintain a lot more control over it and limit it by time.
You can always limit it by you you. First of all, I I'm not sure that we want to test that five with five year. Constraint that we put in there. Um, at the time it was said, well, we can do that if we want, but it's probably not. Um, something that's going to be a slam dunk through the courts. Anyway, we need to decide. I think we got a a woman who's a retailer in town. Good business person in town. And we need to give her some advice that lets her proceed. So.
Oh, she doesn't have to pay for the special exception, am I right?
You do have to pay. You have to have a two hundred and forty dollar application fee and you have to register. With sixty or seventy dollars. So it's a three hundred dollar. Or two hundred and ninety dollars, I think it is. Something like that. To do the special exception. Whereas a permit, I think, is twenty five dollars or something. That we could make part of our consideration, but. I think with the fact that she has a business going now, they. Doing it with a special exception wouldn't be an onerous thing. But.
The only issue I would have with a special exception. For for alcohol in a residential area is then. You have alcohol running with. A private residence. Whereas in a business district, I have no problem with a certain. Uh, store or. Uh, location running with that that special. Um, exception, that ability, so. If there's a way, you know what I'm trying to say? I I don't really want to have a house in a residential area with a.
But we can constrain it to, we can say you can only do web based sales.
And to Kevin's point, the actual.
Yeah, what does the state say?
It does say. They can only be sold um, by the permit holder. So if she does move, whoever is there will technically have to get another permit with the state. It won't be through us. They'll still be able to sell it in that in that location, but we'll be aware of it. Because it that permit would have to be signed off by the zoning enforcement officer.
And our constraints would hold. Our conditions would hold. Could only be done by web based or online sales. That would go with the land.
Correct.
Well, it's it's not the ordering so much as the pickup, is it, that I would have more concern about.
It's gonna create traffic, especially if it's Mr. UPS with those big brown trucks showing up. Two, three, four times a day at her. Yeah, I don't forget that it doesn't matter what we give her. The same all the same provision is in all of them that the people doing the work at the location have to be residents of that at home. And so if it becomes a boom. Making business, something will have to give. How much business could she do by herself when she has her other two locations to run? I don't know if she has a pack of kids there, but. Then there's child labor laws too.
Packaging alcohol.
You know. Upset neighbors could test it all.
The state permit does not let her sell it on the site. She'll not sell. Shall not sell gift baskets on the premises operating under any, oh, I'm sorry, I misspoke.
We could put a, um.
There is an annual renewal fee for the state permit as well of $200.
Okay. So we could, we could say that has to be web-based and that um, she can't cause undue traffic, the same language that we have in our service business as far as not being visible and not causing traffic.
Well, but we can't just make something up, Dave. She needs to be awarded, you know, the opportunity to do business there under one of our regulations. That's one of these.
I'm saying, I'm saying as a condition of the special exception.
Yeah.
We could add to those, to that special exception that she only has, she has to do web-based or phone-based or, uh, sales and that she cannot cause undue traffic, the same language that we use in our service business.
Can you do the service business permit and the special exception? I think both apply. Don't both apply here? Because all of the provisions of the permit are things that we would want to have.
Okay, so we could say she has to do both. That's interesting.
Yeah.
Because we can constrain under the permit times of day for visitors, um, all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, but if she can't sell on the property, she's going to have to be turning the finished product over to a shipper.
No, Laura said that she'd actually misspoken. She can sell on the property.
Yeah, and I'll say in my, my experience, they were, that other individual was selling directly out of the, the site.
But it is limited to the times in which you're able to sell liquor by the state.
But we can further constrain that under permitted uses too, under the service permit. We can further constrain that.
Yeah, actually, I remember one person who had, and it's a different business, but a, a beauty shop in her garage, they were battling in, in Wheaton, actually, somewhere in the Latimer Lane district there. And we limited the number of clients per day. So she could only have like two in the morning and two in the afternoon or something like that. Right. I mean, you know. You just put it in as a different home-based business.
I mean, we want to certainly, you know, make sure that it doesn't become onerous on the neighborhood, but I don't want to like over-regulate the poor woman. She's trying to like save her business by getting additional. I mean, I don't think she's doing this because, you know, I mean, I think she's doing it because she needs to get additional business because of the economy and things, the way things have been on her. I don't want to like make it more. I mean, I'd like to give her, give her the ability to do this in the easiest possible way, as long as we ensure again, that there's no problem with the neighborhood, but I don't want to like start putting five million regulations on the poor woman. Well, I did think that was the case about the business. I thought it was just like a new, there's this new thing you can do online and. I mean, I could be missp, I mean, I'm making an assumption, but she's made some posts on Facebook about how business has been difficult over the last year and, and the lockdowns and, and fight, you know, she's, I'm not saying that this, I mean, I'm just saying, I would like to try to make this as easy for her as possible to be able to expand business. That's all.
I think we're all, we're all saying that, I think.
Okay.
Trying to figure out what, what works in our structure.
Residential neighborhood. Right.
And if we said she had to get a special exception to be able to sell alcohol there and she had to get a service business permit from the town, then both bases would be covered.
That's it.
Does she have to pay a fee for both?
Yes.
It's 25 bucks.
It's, you know, you're talking $300, $350 before she gets through.
Is the 25 bucks a reoccurring thing or, you know, probably not.
Every five years.
Oh, it is. Oh, every five years. Five dollars a year.
But she's $200 a year to the state.
Yeah, but we can't do anything about that. Yeah.
So do we agree on that? Should we tell Laura to tell her that?
Tell her what a special exception would allow the neighbors to weigh in, right?
Right, that's correct. To be a public hearing. That's appropriate, I think.
Yeah.
It may, it may be appropriate since it does involve alcohol and, and, and shipping.
Yeah.
Dan?
I, I know, I, I agree. I just, um, I'm thinking of what, when you were talking about, um, traffic in the neighborhood and FedEx trucks and UPS trucks, what do you consider being, um, an onerous amount of traffic? I mean, how do you define that? I mean, that, that's happening all the time now with Amazon anyhow, you know?
Yeah.
I, I get two or three packages a day sometimes. Yeah, I can just see trucks coming out all day long, you know?
But she, this isn't a cul-de-sac somewhere in West Simsbury. This is, she lives on, on Terry's Plain Road or.
It's Wheaton, it's the corner.
Wheaton, I mean, that's a commuter road. There's a lot of traffic, right, Kevin?
Yeah, it's too much. All those UPS trucks.
Right.
Okay. Well, let's see if we can get to the end of this. Do we all agree that she should do both?
Yeah, I think I do.
I agree. Yeah.
One, two, Kevin?
Yeah, I'll go with that.
Three.
I don't count, but I agree.
Put you in as a zero. Diane? Donna? Donna, you okay? Laura, you okay?
So you see why I brought it to your attention?
Send us the, the state reg, the, the, the section that you looked up.
You know, I think I'm the last standing alternate at this point, aren't I?
Yes.
Yes. Don't make, yeah, okay.
It's CGS 30-16 subsection D, and I'd be happy to include it with the public hearing package for the special exception.
Yeah, okay. All right, if you do.
Yeah, but just, could you repeat that site? Can I accept gentle statute, what?
So it's the statute definition. It's 30-16 subsection D.
16?
30-16.
It's a gift basket retailer permit.
30-16, what?
D, as in dog.
Oh, okay. Got it. Got it. Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next order of business is the election of officers. And I think we should start with the chair and nominations. Can I hear nominations for the position of chair?
Uh, I nominate.
Thomas, wait a minute, one at a time. Donna?
Ladies first.
I, I nominate Dave Ryan.
Are there nominations?
Yes, I nominate Kevin Gray.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Then the nominations are closed. We'll have a roll call vote. Ann?
Um, I, my vote goes for Dave Ryan.
Kevin?
He's done a good job.
I'd vote for me.
Okay, Bruce?
I am, I'm voting for Kevin.
Okay, Diane?
Didn't know I'd have to make a choice here when I, but I am voting for Dave. I, you know, I know I'm new to the board, but he's, he's guided us well and so I'm voting for Dave.
And me, I vote for me. So that's four votes for me, and I think that's, uh, carries the election. So thank you.
Okay.
Next order of business is a vote for the vice chair. So your nominations.
I'll nominate Kevin Gray.
Any other nominations? Hearing nominations are closed. Congratulations, Kevin. Um, we don't need to do a roll.
But Dave, you still have to have a vote.
You still have to vote. How do I know?
All right, all in favor of Kevin?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Okay, six, nothing. Kevin, you get six votes.
Because you need a minimum of four, yeah.
Right.
Thank you, everybody.
I'm certainly very glad I can't say anything tonight.
All right. Anything else this evening, people, except for Mike, we'd like to get a gift basket for you or something. Soon as that lady gets her business done. We'll, we'll work on getting him a disc gift.
But you'll have to go pick it up yourself.
Only if we permit it.
Okay, motion to adjourn.